Clerk, please call the roll.
Hillberg.
Here.
Colissar.
Here.
Lamb.
Here.
Rose.
Here.
Shields.
Here.
Simpson.
Here.
Coin.
Here.
Reading of the minutes?
Mr. President.
Mr. Shields?
I move that the minutes of the regular meeting from April 28, 2014, is prepared and submitted by the clerk be approved.
Second. Discussion on the minutes. Clerk, please call the roll and adoption of the minutes.
Colissar?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coin?
Yes.
Hillberg?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero.
Reports of standing committees. The Finance Committee met prior to council, and our next meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, February, uh, May 26th, it's February, month of the month, May 27th, 2014, since on the 26th is Memorial Day, so the next meeting will be on Tuesday again, May 27th. Health, Safety, and Sanitation Committee, Mr. Rose?
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. I have no report, but we're looking to schedule a meeting pending the recommendation of the utility rate review.
Thank you. Public Properties Committee, Mr. Shields?
Thank you, Mr. President. Public Properties met last Monday, May 5th. Our main topic was the city pool. We're working on scheduling another meeting on that same topic next week, possibly either the 20th or 21st, but we're still, I think those were dates that were...
That's Tuesday or Thursday.
Oh, I'm sorry, Tuesday or Thursday then? Okay. Well, we'll let you know, we're working on that right now. Also, I had to talk about the pool at that meeting as well.
Thank you. Special Legislation Committee, Mr. Lamb?
Thank you, Mr. President. Nothing to report.
Thank you. Streets and Sidewalks Committee, Mr. Simpson?
Thank you, Mr. President. Streets and Sidewalks tentatively going to be holding a meeting sometime at the beginning of June. Thank you.
Thank you. Water and Utilities Committee, Mr. Colzar?
Thank you, Mr. President. Nothing to report at this time.
Thank you. Requests for council action? We have several items for the Finance Committee. We have 1493, establish a new fund for unclaimed monies, Fund Number 901. 1494, amend ordinance 3914, revise contract for private hangar sublease. 1495, payment over $3,000 to FetchCo. 1496, fiscal year 2014, CDBG grant application. 1497, fiscal year 2014, CHIP grant application. 1498, zoning code and zoning map amendments for the Planning Commission recommendation. 1499, RFQ for Champion Creek Stream Bank and Riparian Restoration. 14100, expenditure over $15,000 for cozing materials. 14101, bids for Lake Road Reconstruction Phase Two, Job 940. 14102, MOU for Wheeling Lake Erie Railroad, West Smith Crossing. 14103, expenditure over $15,000 to HSH Construction. 14104, approved job description ED planning intern. 14105, qualifications-based selection process for design services for Memorial Pool. 14106, budget amendment. 14107, amending residential fence code, Section 137104 height limits. And then 14108, payment over $3,000 to chip wall roofing. Reports of municipal officers, Mayor Hamel?
Thank you, Mr. President. The, um, new city website is up and functional in all regards. We're just asking the public now if there's some information that you'd like to see that you're not seeing, or a particular form that's not on the website. If you'd let us know, we'd be happy to add anything in addition to what's currently there. The National Day of Prayer events, uh, were held on Thursday, May 1st. Had a breakfast in the morning, noon prayer service, and then an evening service at Cornerstone. And, um, they all went well and were relatively well-attended. Then two, uh, two days later, on Saturday, May 3rd, Love Medina had a day of serving in the community where they, um, went out and probably 50 to 60 volunteers and a number of local churches, uh, had assignments to do yard cleanup and, uh, mulch in flower beds, painting, um, picking up sticks and twigs and whatnot in yards for some of our local seniors and disabled residents. That was organized by Pastor Tony Miles from the Connection Church. And the work was divided up among the church by Mike Van Arsdale, depending geographically where the need was in relation to where the churches were. And, um, I think I've shared with council, but we've, we've had a number of, uh, thank you notes and emails on, on that program. This Friday, May 16th, at 7:30 PM, Rolling Thunder is hosting a candlelight vigil on Medina Public Square to honor the troops and their families. And, uh, there's no admission, the public is invited to attend. And then, uh, on Monday, May 26th, which is the day before our next council meeting, is the Memorial Day Parade that starts up on the square at the courthouse. The wreath ceremony at the front of the courthouse occurs at about 10 AM. The parade then steps off at Broadway and, uh, Washington. And wraps around the south side, the west side, and the north sides of the square, and then goes out east, East Liberty to Spring Grove Cemetery. Uh, by the time the parade ends, it's about 11 AM, and there's a, a short ceremony at the monument there. And then, in addition, at 1:15 PM, uh, that afternoon, there's a short ceremony at the Medina County Vietnam Veterans Memorial, which is at, on Northland Drive next to the Veterans Office. And everybody's welcome to attend that. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Durham, Director of Finance?
Thank you, Mr. President. Of course, uh, being in finance, I'm looking forward to the budget hearing on Wednesday. There's three items later on the agenda that I'll address when we get there.
Thank you. We appreciate the vote of confidence on that budget hearing. Law Director, Mr. Huber?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report.
Thank you. Police Chief, Chief Baraducci?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report.
Thank you. Ms. Rice, Economic Development Director?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a quick item to note for council and the public. We are having our second public meeting for the Medina Downtown Street Strategic Redevelopment Plan on Tuesday, May 27th, from 5 PM to 7 PM here at Medina City Hall in the Rotunda. Uh, the draft plan will be presented in an open house format, so there, we're not going to have the formal presentation again, like we did last time. Um, there will be opportunities for the public to give their, um, comments and feedback on the concepts that will be presented, so we hope that you will all be able to join us. Thank you.
Thank you. Chief Painter, Fire Chief?
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, I'd just like to take a moment to remind the residents that there's no burning of yard debris or open burning within the city. EPA is getting really strict with us. Uh, I know it's been a long winter, and they'd like to get the yards cleaned up, but burning really isn't an option, and it's not really been a good neighbor. But if they give us a call at Station One, we can work out, give them some options of how to get rid of their debris, or what burning options they are within the permits. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Wright, Recreation Center Director?
Thank you, Mr. President. I do have a report. Um, the Medina Rec wants to remind parents that summer vacation is almost here. The Rec offers a fantastic summer camp program for kids ages five through 12. Countless activities for all the age groups, including field trips that each week, for each week, um, all the way from Kalahari, Geogee Lake, Wild Water Kingdom, Cleveland Zoo, and Rainforest. Uh, Children's Museum, Nautica Queen, Laser Quest, Rinky Dink, and movies, just to name a few. Um, the first week you can sign up for starts June 2nd through the 6th, and the program ends the week of August 11th through the 15th. You can sign up to kids for one week or multiple weeks, and, uh, we offer a discount for multiple weeks. And if you sign up before May 26th, we also offer, uh, multiple child discounts, too. Um, our hours for summer camp are Monday through Friday, 8 AM to 5 PM. We also offer early drop-off and, uh, late pickup. Uh, for more information, you can go to our website at medinarec.org, or call the Rec Center at 330-721-6900, or pick up a brochure and turn to page three. Um, you can also call Marine Doll, our program specialist, at 330-721-6935. And, uh, lastly, our Rec Advisory Board meeting for this week has been canceled for May, uh, but we'll meet next month, Thursday, June 19th, at, uh, the Rec Center at 7:30 AM. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Rowley, Parks and Recreation Director?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have, uh, two things to report tonight. As most of you are aware, the turf on the square appears to have some substantial yellowing. Um, this is a result of an error in the chemical application. A contractor was hired to spray liquid chemicals, and they were mixed incorrectly, resulting in an over-application, uh, which led to the yellow streaking. Um, today and tomorrow, the Parks Department mowed and drill-seated these areas. They will be mulched with a green substance, um, to allow for, for the turf to recover. And these areas will be roped off in an effort to get some, uh, greener turf, uh, prior to Memorial Day. We've taken a proactive measure to closely oversee any future of applications, uh, to ensure that this doesn't happen again. Um, secondly, our splash pads at Greenwood and Ray Mellert are being tested this week and should be open by the end of next week, prior to Memorial Day weekend. The hours at Fred Greenwood are 11 AM to 8 PM, and Ray Mellert, it's 12 PM to 8 PM. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Patton, City Engineer?
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, this afternoon, at Border Control and later at Finance, three projects were awarded contracts. The Forest Meadows Storm Steward and Drainage Improvement Project. Uh, the second was the Lancaster Drive Rear Yard Drainage Improvement. And third, the South Court Water Tank Interior Coating Contracts were awarded for all three of those. Also, I wanted to note, uh, some road closures due to railroad crossing replacements. Uh, this week, as most folks know, State Road between West Smith and West Liberty is closed. It's anticipated that work will be done, and the road will be open on Friday, about May 16th. Next week, uh, starting on Monday, May 19th, and lasting through Saturday, the 24th, West Smith between Lake and Commerce will be closed to allow for the replacement of the railroad crossing there. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Pacoli, Service Director?
Thank you, Mr. President. Earlier this morning, we attempted to have the areas of North Court Street resurfaced, where we, um, had them milled in late winter, with a series of potholes been. The contractor unfortunately was rained out. Um, they are scheduled temporarily to continue the rest of this week, weather contingent. Um, additionally, the Water Department has Circle Drive closed this evening, just south of Lafayette, in an effort to repair a water main that, uh, was broken earlier today. So we appreciate your patience and understanding in that area. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor's appointment, we have one. Ed Farnham, Airport Commission, filling a vacancy for a term expiring 12/31/2015.
Move to confirm the mayor's appointment?
Second. Any discussion on the mayor's appointment? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coin?
Yes.
Hillberg?
Yes.
Colissar?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero.
Notices, communications, and petitions, there are none unfinished business. There's none introduction of visitors. Members of the public will be permitted the opportunity to speak on any issue or concern which pertains to the city during the portion of the council agenda devoted to introduction of visitors. All comments shall be directed to the chair, and a reasonable timeline of approximately five minutes will be imposed. If there is a group, please appoint a spokesperson. Speakers should approach the front right microphone and state their name and address, so it can be entered into the minutes. Members of the public will be afforded the opportunity to comment on other portions of the meeting, as determined by the chair, or by a vote of the majority of council members present. Is there anybody that wishes to address council at this time?
Thank you, Mr. President. Erica Graffin with the Auditor's Office. I have two reminders tonight. We've talked about the homestead exemption for a while, and that deadline is fast approaching. That's Monday, June 2nd. Anybody eligible to have signed up, um, for 2013 will lose the ability to sign up without the income requirement at that time. So, any groups who are involved, and if you could get that word out, have them call the office. Secondly, we are out picking up our new construction, and we're checking for the farm usage this year. We have IDs, our vehicles are marked. Any questions, please call the office. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that wishes to address council? Mr. Smalley?
Thank you, Mr. President. Roger Smalley, I'm Chairman of the Medina City Archive Commission. Uh, I came this evening, uh, for several reasons. Uh, one, to, uh, speak to some of the comments that were made at the last council meeting, uh, just as some points of clarification. Before I do that, uh, I'd like to, uh, extend a thank you to, uh, in particular, Mr. Simpson, Mr. Shields, and Mr. Lamb for their vocal support of the Archive Commission and the museum at the last meeting. And certainly, uh, counsel as a whole, thank you for all they have done for the project as well. Uh, just so the public is aware, uh, the Medina City Archive Commission is a council-created by ordinance in 1997, uh, council-created organization. Uh, the members of the commission, three are appointed by Medina City Council, and three by the mayor. And, uh, they serve, and the commission serves, at the pleasure of local government. The commission has been tasked primarily, uh, as their major duty, to create a Medina Historical Museum in the Medina Town Hall and Engine House, which is located at 50 Public Square. This is the 1878 building that served not only as a firehouse, but also as really the local seat of government, uh, for, for over a century. So, or nearly a century, pardon me. So, this is a very historic building, and, uh, it's an excellent place for a history museum of the Medina community. And that is what has been created on the lower level of that space in the old engine bay. The, um, museum has been supported since 1999 by the Medina Town Hall and Engine House Museum Foundation. And, uh, as a result of fundraising efforts on that group's behalf, nearly $20,000 of local funds from individuals and local, uh, foundations had been put into the museum project, uh, before we came back and asked council to help us complete that in 2012, which council graciously did. So that's kind of the background, um, of what this museum is about, and how it has come to be. And I will speak a little later on about when it's going to be open, uh, for the summer season. Uh, we have a lot of dates coming up, when it will be available to the public. The comments last, uh, at the last council meeting, um, I don't know the individual source of his information, uh, but I felt some of the points were, were important enough that I should come this evening just to clarify them. There was a comment made that we are charging admission, uh, to the museum. And I want to make it absolutely clear that that is not the case. Uh, we have never charged admission, uh, to the Medina Town Hall and Engine House Museum, uh, either now or in the past. Uh, this museum is a museum of the community's history, and it is located in a public building. Uh, as long as that remains the case, uh, there's no intention of charging for admission. Now, we have tour groups that are coming in, uh, and we do accept the stipend from them. But as far as the regular public coming in, visitors and our local residents, there is no charge whatsoever. Now, we do have a donation box that we have in the museum when it is open, uh, for visitors to contribute if they wish. It's completely voluntary. Since July 1st of last year, generous visitors from children to seniors have dropped coins and bills into that box. And we greatly appreciate their thoughtfulness of doing this, to help support the museum. To date, those donations have totaled $196.89. And those funds have been deposited in an account that is dedicated solely for the support of the museum. Another claim that was made at the last council meeting was that the Archive Commission has asked city council for $25,000 in additional funds to support, among other things, the hiring of a museum employee. That claim is not true. Um, the Archive Commission, as a body, has not asked council for any additional funding, uh, nor do we intend to at this point in time. We don't see the need for it right now. If council chooses to do something different, that's up to council to do. Uh, today, we have 15 people, not 200, who have volunteered to host the public when the museum is open. We are inviting more folks to become involved, including, thanks to Mr. Shields, members of council. Um, because we have a limited number of docents, we have focused on being open when there were many people uptown, to maximize their volunteering. That will continue this summer, as the museum plans to be open to the public, uh, rather extensively. Currently, the third graders from many of the Medina elementaries are visiting the museum and hearing a very educational talk from the Assistant Fire Chief, Mark Crumley, on the history of the fire department, but they're also able to see the displays that are in the museum. And I believe that's going on this weekend next. Um, this coming Saturday morning, we have a tour group coming in, uh, most of them from Lorraine, but some also here from Medina. And this is a Model T Club that wishes to see the museum. And they will be given a private tour on Saturday morning. The name of that group, by the way, is the Bumps and Grinds Group. Um, the, uh, museum will be, uh, open, uh, during the Memorial Day Parade. It will be open an hour before the parade and an hour after, assuming the 11 o'clock time is, is correct. We will be open, uh, beginning with the first band concert for, on Friday nights, from 7 to 8:30. And we will close, we plan to close the museum at 8:30. That's when the concerts begin. And the Medina Community Band and Marcus, uh, put an awful lot of time into creating those programs, uh, and continuing a tradition in Medina that began in 1859. And we do not wish to compete with the band concert. So we plan to close the museum at 8:30 and let everyone enjoy the concerts. We will be open the following morning for Farmer's Market from 10 to noon, and if traffic so dictates, we'll stay open longer if that's necessary. So throughout the summer, certainly June and July, every band concert, and the farmer's markets, all the way into the fall. We plan to be open for the Fourth of July Parade and the following concert, and all of the major events that are, uh, up on the park, in the park, and uptown throughout the summer. Those would include, uh, the three Jazz Under the Stars concerts, sponsored by O'Marko, the Kids' Day of Play, Pizza Palooza, and the Antique Show, uh, which are all sponsored by Main Street Medina, and others as well. Uh, Arts Week, an entire week, uh, leading up to Art in the Park, and of course, will be open for Art in the Park as well. In July, or in August, rather, a Fair on the Square, another Jazz, Jazz Under the Stars concert, and then, of course, the International Festival as well. If we get more docents, uh, we will try to be open at other times as well, and as other events are added to the calendar that is kept, uh, in the mayor's office, uh, we will try to add times in addition. We've already, uh, put these, this schedule, uh, it is on the city's website, I hope it's made that by now. It will be if it isn't. Uh, on the visitor, uh, the Convention and Visitors Bureau website has the entire schedule for the museum being open, uh, as does Main Street Medina. So we are hoping that, um, people will be able to come out and, and visit the museum. Um, of course, this schedule council I know is familiar with. Uh, the Archive Commission did send you a preliminary copy of that back in March with the minutes, and we've now, you know, fleshed that out as far as the exact times. And those schedules are where I mentioned. The Archive Commission is meeting again Thursday, this coming Thursday, at 5:30, and we meet in the museum. And, um, I would just once again like to thank the council, the administration, particularly Mr. Pacoli, for all the help that he has given, uh, in creating the museum as it is. Museum is, as all museums are, is an evolving, uh, institution. We have new things coming that we hope to have in place for the beginning of the summer season, new displays, additional items of Medina history that we haven't had room to put in, and we're hoping to get all that in before, uh, the band concert, if not as soon as possible. So, uh, once again, I invite council and all the residents of Medina and the visitors that come here, please, come and learn about the history of our community. It is fascinating. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that wishes to address council? Introduction and consideration of ordinances and resolutions. Resolution 75-14, a resolution donating 12 Dell computers to Medina City Schools. Move to approve? Second. Discussion?
Mr. President?
Mr. Shields?
I will need to abstain on this, since my employer is the Medina City Schools.
Okay. Uh, any further discussion? Is Mayor Hamel, or you want to address this one? Oh, I'm sorry. See it on there, Mike.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, yeah, this just request to donate, uh, 12 of the 20 units that are, uh, we discontinued use of because of the operating systems being outdated. Um, in the past, in the auction, there have been little to no value on these when they sold, so, um, we'd much rather donate them to the schools and have them use them than dispose of them the way through auction. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion or comment on the resolution? Clerk, please call the roll.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Abstain.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coin?
Yes.
Hillberg?
Yes.
Colissar?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Resolution 75-14 passes six years, one abstention.
Ordinance 76-14, ordinance authorized the mayor to enter a lease agreement with Intervention for Peace, Inc. I think that's changed now. Um, the name has changed. Yeah, for the property located at 406 South Broadway Street.
Move to approve?
Second. Discussion, Mr. Huber?
I drafted a lease with Intervention for Peace. I can't remember the name. You changed it. You reincorporated it, correct?
Peace Works Inc.
That's right.
Peace Works?
Peace Works Inc.
What is it?
Peace Works Incorporated.
Okay. Thank you.
The, um, I would ask that this ordinance be passed, subject to my approval. The attorney representing Peace Works Incorporated made some changes. Um, I've looked at them briefly, and I haven't sorted out what I'm going to propose to keep and what I'm going to reject. But I hope to do that this week. The, uh, center of the agreement has not changed. What has changed are some details that are administrative in nature.
Any further discussion or comment?
Mr. President?
Mr. Colzar?
I'll just be real brief here. Um, this, uh, this opportunity is in, uh, the Ward Three neighborhoods, and I think it's a, a great, uh, chance for, uh, this organization and, and the, the individuals that work with them to come out and really get involved with our community. Um, this is a chance to, uh, have, uh, this organization work, uh, with the public, um, in different ways of, uh, providing coffee, selling, uh, or, uh, possibly future renting bikes, uh, working with other local companies to supply some of the items that they sell. Uh, so to me, I think it's a, a well-rounded, um, um, opportunity for our community, and, uh, you know, I just think it's great that they've stepped up and want to get involved, and getting involved quickly to, um, make it happen here on, uh, the South Broadway Trailhead. Uh, we've, we've invested a lot of money in the, the trail itself to try to bring residents, uh, from the, the neighborhoods uptown, and, uh, to have them to be greeted, uh, by you coming in, whether they're using the trail or coming in to use the parking lot, and having a nice cup of coffee in a nice green space area right in the uptown, uh, next to Champion Creek. So I thank you guys for, uh, stepping up and getting involved quickly to make something happen there on that property. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion or comment? Will the clerk please call the roll? No ordinance?
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coin?
Yes.
Hillberg?
Yes.
Colissar?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Ordinance 76-14 passes seven zero, subject to the law director's approval.
Ordinance 77-14, an ordinance authorizing the purchase of one 2015 F-250 four-wheel-drive truck equipped with a reading steel service body from Montrose Ford for the Street Department.
Move to approve?
Second. Discussion, Mr. Pacoli?
Thank you, Mr. President. This purchase is through the CUE Program, which is the Community University Education Purchasing Association. This type of service body will be beneficial in the daily operations to the Street Department and serve the public well. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Mr. President.
Mr. Colzar?
Real quick, and I apologize in bringing up prior to this, but I believe I asked the mayor at the last meeting, I don't think Nino was attending, about possibly using a, was it aluminum or stainless steel body? And, did you guys look in that, into that, the price difference and if it was feasible or made sense?
Yes, Mr. Colzar, thank you. And with that, the open steel body is beneficial. This will not be hauling any salt. It's basically tools and will be kept inside. So, it's not a dump body. It's that open utility box type body. So, will not be hauling salt or any of the chemicals, so.
No, I understand that, but it'd still be out in the elements and I just didn't know if you guys, all right, thank you.
No problem.
Any further discussion or comment? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Simpson?
Yes.
Coin?
Yes.
Hilberg?
Yes.
Colosar?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Ordnance 77-14 passes 7-0.
Ordinance 78-14, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute preliminary legislation with Ohio Department of Transportation, ODOT, for the completion of the US 42 Improvement Project.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion?
Mr. President.
Mr. Shields?
Emergency clause has been requested. I move to add that at this time.
My second includes the emergency clause.
Mr. Patton?
Thank you. This would be council's official authorization to ODOT to approve the US, the 42 Improvement Project, which is the North Court Street widening. This is to widen into five lanes, the center-left turn lane, and a portion of it would be the raised median barrier project that we've been discussing for many years now. This offers our full support and authorizes ODOT to make these improvements. It also compels us in the future. We don't have to cut this check yet, but it's our pledge for our share of the $1.1 million donate, not donation, but our, our share of the project.
Thank you. Any further discussion or comment? I just want to mention, I appreciate all the help and assistance in this, in this project. I know we had a lot of public comment on the State Route 42 project. And I think it's going to be a great addition to that area, an improvement to the area, to both widen the lanes. I think we're talking about putting a center divider in there and also sidewalks and just make it more appealing for the future generations and hopefully for the, the public in that regard. Is there any further discussion on the emergency clause or the ordinance? Clerk, please call the roll on the emergency clause.
Hilberg?
Yes.
Colosar?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coin?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0.
Any further discussion in the ordinance? Clerk, please call the roll on the ordinance?
Coin?
Yes.
Hilberg?
Yes.
Colosar?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coin?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0.
Any further discussion in the ordinance? Clerk, please call the roll on the ordinance?
Coin?
Yes.
Hilberg?
Yes.
Colosar?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Ordnance 78-14 passes 7-0.
Resolution 79-14, a resolution requesting Medina County Auditor to certify the total current tax valuation and dollar amount revenue that would be generated for the renewal of a 2.2 mils for the operation of an ambulance and emergency medical service.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion?
Mr. President.
Mr. Shields?
The emergency clause has been requested. I move to add it at this time.
My second includes the emergency clause.
Mr. Durham?
Thank you, Mr. President. The, this is for a storm sewer repair that had to be done. The repair wasn't planned, so there wasn't a previous purchase order. That's why we have to have this ordinance here and the emergency clause is because the work's already been done. We want to get the vendor paid.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion or comment? Will the clerk please call the roll on the emergency clause?
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coin?
Yes.
Hilberg?
Yes.
Colosar?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coin?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0.
Clerk, please call the roll on the resolution.
Colosar?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coin?
Yes.
Hilberg?
Yes.
Colosar?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coin?
Yes.
Motion passes 6-0, one abstention.
Clerk, please call the roll on the resolution.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Abstain.
Coin?
Yes.
Hilberg?
Yes.
Colosar?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Motion passes 6-0, one abstention.
Clerk, please call the roll on the resolution.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Abstain.
Coin?
Yes.
Hilberg?
Yes.
Colosar?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Resolution 80-14 passes 6-0, one abstention.
Ordinance 81-14, ordering the meeting ordinance number 20813 passed December 9th, 2013, amendments to the 2014 budget.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion?
Mr. Durham?
Thank you, Mr. President. This has only one appropriation adjustment this time. It is to appropriate money that was paid to us by this, by the school for salt that we purchased.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coin?
Yes.
Hilberg?
Yes.
Colosar?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Ordnance 81-14 passes 7-0.
And ordinance 82-14, ordering the mayor to execute a memorandum of understanding between the city of Medina and the Wheeling Lake Area Railway Company relative to the reconstruction of the West Smith Road Crossing.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion?
Mr. President.
Mr. Shields?
Emergency clause has been requested. I move to add it at this time.
My second includes the emergency clause.
Mr. Patton?
Thank you. As I mentioned in my remarks prior, the Wheeling Lake Area Railroad is currently replacing the crossing on State Road. They would like to replace the crossing on Lake Road starting next week. That's the reason for the requesting the emergency clause. This, I would note, out of the, I think, 16 combined crossings in the city, once this one and later this summer, South Court Street Crossing gets replaced, that means all those crossings have been replaced within, I think, the last seven years. This crossing's in very bad shape. Would recommend we move forward with it.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion or comment? Yes, Mayor?
The ordinance itself in Section 1 states dual crossing. It's a single crossing, just for clarification. And then, on the agreement itself, in the introduction, it states upgrade of two railroad crossings, but that should be one, the word one and the number one.
Okay, we'll make the corrections in the typographical errors. Is there any further discussion or comment? Clerk, please call the roll on the emergency clause.
Hilberg?
Yes.
Colosar?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coin?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0.
Clerk, please call the roll on the ordinance.
Coin?
Yes.
Hilberg?